Welcome, everyone. I'll call this February 11th, 2025 Meeting of Council to order at 6:01 PM. This meeting will be held in a hybrid manner where members of council, staff, and the public can participate electronically. This meeting is being livestreamed and recorded and will be available on the township website. Notice is hereby provided that under the authority of the Municipal Act 2001, and in accordance with Municipal Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act, that all information attained is considered part of the public record. All rules apply to the meeting as if everyone was attending in person, and if there's a problem with the technology impacting the proceedings, a meeting of the meeting, the meeting may be recessed. So at this time, I would ask everyone to stand for the National Anthem that can. We acknowledge that we are being hosted on the ancestral lands of the Horonoshani, Mississauga, and Omamawenni people. We acknowledge and welcome the presence of all Indigenous people, including the Métis, Inuit, and other First Nations from across this vast land. We also make this place home. The lands we are on today are recognized in the Two-Roe Wampumpum, Dish with One Spoon Treaty, Treaty 27, and the Crawford Purchase. Okay, so the next item up is the confirmation of the agenda. And just before we do that, as you can see, we do have two members of council on virtually. The procedural bylaw permits one to attend, so I turn to council. Do you have wording for that? Turn to clerk.
Yes, I do, and I'll share my screen.
Okay. The clerk will share her screen with the wording for the revised potential motion, if you wish to waive the procedural bylaw as well. Once, Counsel Ernest.
I lost it. It's gone. Move that the agenda of the February 11th, 2025 Meeting of Council be confirmed as circulated. That council waives Section 7.3(c) of the procedural bylaw to permit more than one member to attend the meeting virtually.
So move. Do we have a seconder? Counsel Broderick. Call a question. All in favor, motion is passed. Are there any declarations of pecuniary interest or the general nature thereof this evening? Saying none. There's no closed session or presentation, so we'll move straight into the statutory public meeting. I just have a little preamble here. So this is a public meeting and a recommendation report for the Amherstview West Secondary Plan, Official Plan Amendment, Zoning Bylaw Amendment, and Urban Design Guidelines. A public meeting is being held in accordance with the provisions of Sections 1715 and 3412 of the Planning Act to consider an official plan amendment, zoning bylaw amendment, and urban design guidelines to implement the Amherstview West Secondary Plan. The lands included in the proposed secondary plant, secondary plan area boundary are bound by Taylor Kidd Boulevard to the north, Bath Road to the south, Parrots Bay Conservation Area to the west, and County Road 6 to the east. The secondary plan will address the extension of Amherstview to the west to accommodate future needs and priorities for the new community, including housing types, urban design, community amenities, protection of the natural environment, servicing stormwater management, and transportation, including active transportation. The secondary plan will be implemented through the Official Plan Amendment, which will add the policies and schedules of the secondary plan to the Township Official Plan. And implementing zoning bylaw amendment is also being brought forward that establishes the implementing zones, permitted uses, and development standards consistent with the secondary plan use designations and policies. The urban design guidelines have been developed in support of the secondary plan. Council shall hear in person or by his or her council solicitor or agent any person who claims to be affected by this application. So as we go into the public meeting portion now, there were a number of people that signed up as they came in. So I will just go through that list and call them up in order that they, their name is on the list. Then I will open it to everyone and anyone else in chambers that wishes to speak, and then I'll go to the virtual audience. And if you're in the virtual audience, if you could use, be prepared to use a raised hand feature, then we will know to bring you into the meeting. But I will give a reminder on that when we get to that portion. So the first one, Brenda Darling.
Ms. Sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I got ahead of myself. We will get to all of that other stuff. First, there's a presentation, so I'm going to ask staff members to come forward, and they will work in unison to provide us with the report.
Good evening, your worship, members of council. Great to see you again at this very historic occasion, which has been building for quite some time. I think four years is roughly the time period that we've been engaging in this effort to develop a secondary plan which meets the interests of the township as well as the residents and all the key agencies and provincial ministries. And I think we finally arrived at a product which does that. It gives everyone what they need, but not necessarily everything that they want. But that's what this is. This is a balancing act to protect the public interest. And I think you're going to see a presentation that does that in a few moments. I'd like to introduce briefly the project team that is responsible for all the work, background work that's gone on in this. And it starts off with our own team here in front of you. So Andrea Furnas and Luke McDonald have been with this project since the beginning. Through all the permutations that we've gone through, the direction to expand the scope of the project early on. COVID, we had to adjust public outreach and engagement to account for COVID. But these folks have all been around through that process, and I want to thank them personally for their efforts. And James, James is here as well. James has been involved in the project. And on the other side with WSP, we have Nadia DeSanti, Jill McDonald, who are with us tonight and will be taking over this presentation. So thank you very much for your attention. I think we have some razzle-dazzle to show you in a few minutes. And I'm anxious to hear final comments from the public, but it's, I'm certainly very pleased to be at this point today. Thank you.
Thank you, Boden. Good evening, your worship and members of council and the public. My name is Nadia DeSanti. I'm the project manager for this project, as Boden has described, and with me is Jill McDonald. So just to go to the next slide, please, or do you want us to? I don't know if we have control of the screen. Sorry, Boden, we don't have control of the presentation. Is there someone who can advance the slide, please?
Andrea, we will advance the slides as you speak.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you. So the purpose of today's meeting is, as mentioned, as required in the Planning Act. The first statutory public meeting was held on December 10th, and that was to present the final draft secondary plan and associated documents. And tonight's public meeting is to present final key changes based on comments received following that meeting. And so those changes will be shown throughout this presentation to the secondary plan, the Official Plan Amendment, the zoning bylaw, and then the urban design guidelines. And as per the Township Staff Report, recommend, the recommendations are listed for council approval. And then we'll also just highlight the final steps for the secondary plan in the municipal class EA study. So the Loyalist Township Official Plan, next slide, please, provides the overarching land use and policy guidance for the township in its entirety. And the existing Township Official Plan, Section 5.7.6 Fringe Area, identifies Amherstview West as the next long-term expansion for the growth and development. And so the secondary plan and all the supporting studies that went into that, including the implementing planning tools, including the Official Plan Amendment and the zoning bylaw amendment, are setting that framework for the next, you know, 25 years to the year 2046. And the secondary plan also identifies the growth needs, the land uses and policies associated with that, and of course, servicing strategy for these lands. The municipal class environmental assessment, or MCEA, was done concurrently and integrated with the secondary plan process, which is governed by the Planning Act. So two different acts, two different processes, but integrated as one. And the master plan for Amherstview West also addresses the land use servicing, transportation, and environmental considerations. And so as part of that MCEA master plan, there's a separate study called an environmental study report, or ESR, and that will be finalized after the adoption by council on the secondary plan. The ESR will be posted for 30 days for review, and the notice of completion will be posted on the Township's project webpage. Some of the examples, oh, sorry, some of the examples of the infrastructure in that EA will include the roads, the road, the road network, as well as extension of municipal water and wastewater services that are required. So all of the engagement to date has fulfilled both the Planning Act and the MCEA process. Over the last four years, as Boden mentioned, we've had online, in-person, and hybrid meetings with the community, and we've had a very robust engagement program with the community at large, as well as Indigenous, the Indigenous communities. So in terms of what that involved, we had the draft secondary plan presented to the community twice. First one was at a public open house last summer, and then at the statutory meeting in December. And then we also had a community workshop. We've had a couple of meetings with the Indigenous communities, but all Indigenous communities that are shown on this slide have been engaged and kept informed throughout the entire project. So there were a couple of comments received, both verbally at the last meeting and then following the meeting in writing. And the two oral submissions that were received at the meeting included comments related to the consideration of affordable housing and an inquiry regarding the lands proposed to be designated as future development area and the future development area conceptual options. Just wanted to note that the future development area conceptual options are not within the scope of the secondary plan itself, but they were prepared as a high-level direction for consideration by township staff in future planning of these lands beyond the 25-year horizon. So following that December meeting, written comments were also received from the Cataracti Conservation Authority, pardon me, and secondary plan area landowners. So these comments have been reviewed. They've been discussed in the staff report. These comments resulted in changes to the land use plan and the secondary plan policies, and that's why we are here before council and the community tonight to highlight those changes. And with that, I will turn it over to my colleague Jill to review those changes.
Thank you, Nadia, and good evening, your worship, members of council and the public who might be in attendance. So I'm going to provide an overview of the changes to the three secondary plan schedules that were made following the statutory public meeting that was held in December. And as Nadia mentioned, these changes stem from comments received from the Cataracti Region Conservation Authority, as well as secondary plan area landowners. So on the screen is the final Schedule A land use plan, and I'll go over the changes as shown here that are numbered one through four. So the first change includes the application of the Environmental Protection Designation, or EP designation, to the Lost Creek Water Course, which traverses the secondary plan area from north, north to south. This environmental protection designation has been applied to the Lost Creek, but as well as a 50-meter buffer from this feature. In addition, the EP designation has also been applied to the associated Meadow Marsh feature that's located sort of at the northern portion of the Lost Creek, and a 30-meter buffer around this marsh feature. So this change stemmed from recommendation provided by the Cataracti Region Conservation Authority in order to ensure that the Lost Creek and its important connection between the Parrots Bay, the Parrots Bay Provincial Significant Wetland and the Bayview Bowe Provincial Significant Wetland, both features of which are located outside the secondary plan area, that this connection and corridor is preserved. Accordingly, the application of this EP designation would also ensure that new development in Amherstview West is appropriately set back from long-term erosion, soak stability, and flooding risk around these features. And the associated zoning bylaw amendment, which we'll get into in subsequent slides, also proposes to rezone these areas to environmental protection. The second change on Schedule A includes the removal of the environmentally sensitive areas overlay and the regulated areas, natural hazards overlay from Schedule A. These are now shown on Schedule C only. Sorry, there should be a correction there. They're shown on Schedule C. These overlays are still included in the secondary plan. There are no changes to the actual limits of these overlays. They are just removed from this particular schedule. Number three is shown on this slide, the Northern Conceptual Municipal Stormwater Management Pond. The location of this was revised slightly just to accommodate the new EP designation around Lost Creek. And finally, also as a result of a change to the EP designation, there were adjustments made to the low-density residential lands central to the secondary plan area, as well as realignment of multi-use pathway in order to move those features outside of the EP designation. Next slide, please. So just to get into these changes to Schedule A in a bit more finer detail, or in terms of the environmental protection designation that is now shown that applies to the Lost Creek Water Course and the Meadow Marsh and the Buffer, it is noted that this designation has not been applied to existing developed residential properties in the area, and these include a number of properties along Bayview Drive and Parrots Bay Lane. The purpose of this was, so it was not to create legally non-conforming situations as these properties are already developed for residential uses. Required setbacks from the environmental protection zones would still apply, and an environmental impact statement would likely still be required to support a development application should development be proposed within these setbacks. And then as for the second item on the slide, just reiterating that the two overlays are now shown on Schedule C only. Next slide, please. Okay, so number three on the slide shows the readjustment of the Northern Municipal Stormwater Management Pond. You can see that the limits have been changed slightly to accommodate the EP designation. I will note that the stormwater management ponds are not included in the Official Plan Amendment as it's non-designation, but their locations were determined in coronation of township staff and in order to assist with determining other land use locations on the land use plan. And then the lower snippets for number four just show again the adjustment of the low-density residential lands and the realignment of a multi-use pathway. Moving on to secondary plan Schedule B, Transportation Network, there was one change made there. This, this included the shift of the Collector Road slightly south. It's the one that curves sort of central to the secondary plan area, and this was moved in order, again, to accommodate the EP designation and the readjustment of the stormwater management ponds. And, okay, and this, this slide just shows that in closer deal, closer detail and more zoomed in. And finally, Schedule C, Environmental Constraints. So we presented the schedule at the December public meeting. There are no changes to Schedule C since the December public meeting. The two overlays, the environmentally sensitive areas overlay and regulated areas, natural hazards overlay are maintained as they were shown in the December schedule. And now we'll turn it back over to Nadia, and she'll walk us through the final official plan amendment and zoning bylaw amendment.
Thanks, Jill. So the Official Plan Amendment and the zoning bylaw amendment are the planning tools that will help implement the secondary plan policies, designations, so that these lands are ready for future applications of subdivision, site plan, et cetera. So the policies in the secondary plan are also found in the Official Plan Amendment, or OPA for short. And through the OPA, the policies and the schedules will be, are part, are recommended to be approved, and then it will be part of the township's official plan, as well as the schedules will be updating, updates to the township parent official plan. From the zoning bylaw amendments perspective, the... Sorry, did I miss a, pardon me, I missed, I missed a slide. So apologies, council. So the changes from the December 10th, 2024 public meeting are as follows. There were some minor edits to the minor and major collector road policies with respect to access and type of development. And then there were two changes shown as Jill presented. So the environmental protection designation is proposed to apply to the Lost Creek and associated Meadow Marsh wetland and 30- to 50-meter buffer. So that's a schedule change. And then the low-density residential lands shown in yellow are slightly revised to, to the revised environmental protection designation. So one, some, two policy changes with respect to minor and major collector roads, and then two schedule changes that have been made since the December meeting. Now on to the zoning bylaw amendment. The changes since that December meeting include the, so sorry, next slide, please. Next one. Thank you. So the following changes that are proposed are to reflect the environmental protection EP zone as well as the buffers. Then we've also applied the existing residential fourth density exception zone, 16 zone. So R4-16 zone is an existing zone in the Township zoning bylaw. We've applied that to some of the lands. The R4-16 zone limits are revised to implement the changes to the low-density residential designation south of Lost Creek. We've also shown open space, an open space, OS, zone adjacent to Lost Creek. That's been revised again to implement the changes to the parks and open space designation. And then changes to zone provisions in R4-16, R5-22, R6-3 with respect to lot frontage and driveways. And then in the future development zone, that's the FD lands. That's the lands that are, that go beyond the 25 years. Planning horizon is, has been amended to permit the growing of crops as a non-residential use. Excuse me. And then in the urban design guidelines, so these have been prepared with a lot of collaboration and community input, township input as well. One small change was made in response to comments received since the December statutory public meeting. So the final draft urban design guidelines note that buildings and the principal entrances should be oriented to face the street, which would effectively restrict backlotting, blotting on township roads, and limit housing with rear yard face fencing along collector and arterial roads. So concerns were raised, excuse me, that there may be circumstances where backlotting and fencing may be appropriate, such as noise mitigation. So with that comment, we have revised Section 3.2.2 Scale Massing and Orientation Building Frontage/Street Edge in the Urban Design Guidelines to note that backlotting on collector and arterial roads may be required for these reasons, such as safety, security, or environmental purposes. And in some cases, mitigation may be required. So in terms of next steps, following council adoption of the secondary plan, Official Plan Amendment, zoning bylaw amendment, and urban design guidelines, there will be a notice of decision that's issued. Then there's a 20-day appeal period from the date of that notice of decision. Following council adoption as well, the municipal class environmental assessment and notice of completion will be issued. So the environmental study report, the ESR, will be finalized, and it, with the notice of completion, will be available for a 30-day public review. And once that 20-day and 30-day public review process, excuse me, have ended, we're all done. So I want to thank, I take this opportunity to really thank township staff. They've been such an incredible team to work with. The landowners, the TAC, our coordinating committee, members at large, really do thank all of you for helping us. This has been a team effort for sure, and we're, as registered professional planners, it's very exciting to work on these types of projects and plans and plan for new communities. So, your worship and council, this concludes our presentation, and thank you and all the best for future growth and development in Amherstview West. We look forward to seeing it on the ground. Thank you.
Thank you. Was there anything to add from staff in chambers? Okay, thank you. I would just open it up to council. Are there any questions for staff or WSP at this time? Counsel Willis?
Thank you, through your worship. The urban design guidelines, how are those going to be actually implemented on the ground or enforced when planning applications are coming to us?
Yes, through your worship to Counselor Willis, we we have put in a recommendation in the staff report that council directs staff to use those guidelines in evaluating development applications. They are guidelines, but putting that recommendation in that council's given that direction gives us a little bit of teeth to to work with them when development applications come in.
Counselor Budrick?
Just to follow up on something similar to Counselor Willis through you, sorry. Will we be having any specific, I guess, guidelines on lot sizes, lot widths, anything like that? Just because in the last public meeting, they were talking about affordable homes being built. And I was just wondering if we were able to have something that might be a little bit smaller of a lot that you could maybe make the home a little more affordable.
Yes, through your worship. So we do have zoning standards that are being that we're recommending for approval tonight. So those are ones that essentially we're comfortable with recommending without reviewing a development proposal. So when a specific subdivision or site plan application, and then we do our detailed development review along with technical agencies. And then if if an applicant wanted to propose smaller lot frontages or or you know, less less lot area, then we would review that in the context of that subdivision to make sure that it works with all of our other pieces of review like stormwater management, for example.
Any other questions from council at this time? Thank you very much for the presentation. But now we can go to the public portion and I would call Brenda Darling forward as the first. Okay. He's not on the list, so that would be later on if he does speak. Did you have anything you wanted to present at this time then or? Okay, if are you Steve? Okay, so you're next on the list. So if you wish to speak, if you could just come up to the mic, turn it on and it's no one else will hear us virtually unless you're speaking into the mic. So the purplish colored one? Yes, there you go. So if you can just again provide your name and address and the information.
My name's Steve Darling. I own 4669 Bath Road. I have a concern regarding the delisting of the barn, which is about 100 feet from my house. It is old. The weather is very dry. In the past couple of years, when it's been vacant, I've had to remove transients from the property. And they're not really sharp about keeping themselves warm. Match here, match there, that barn's going to go up in a second. Now, we've done this a few times. And I'm not a babysitter by nature. So I'm just going to leave this with you. That the sooner that property's that building's delisted and demolished, a lot happier we're going to be. Because not only myself, but my neighbors. We've got old trees there, old buildings. Flash fire, not a problem. And a lot of insurance.
Okay, thank you. Yes. And staff at the back are making note of that as well. Okay. So the next one is Mark. Sorry, the I'm not sure if I'm making out the last name, T O U? Okay, thank you. Sorry about that. I just sometimes the handwriting and we don't match up. The next one is Jim Thompson. And again, Mr. Thompson, if you could just come and turn the mic on, provide your name, address and provide us with the information.
My name is James Thompson. I live at 4809 Bath Road, which is the old Nicholson Farm. I've noticed a bit from what we could see on the screens that the retention ponds that were designated for the rear of all the houses on Bath Road have now been eliminated. We have a very large amount of water that flows from those fields down through into those houses into my farm and everything else. What has the township come up with to alleviate that problem? Because once the roads and the houses are all built in that area, the ground coverage is going to be hard. There's not going to be any way for the water to escape. And right now I get hundreds of thousands of gallons of water running through my farm. I just want to know, is there a secondary plan for retention ponds in behind our homes? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And just so everyone knows, once everyone is presented, like I said, I'll bring up bring ask staff if they have any answers to provide. They'll do that all at once. They're busy. I see them writing down the questions and so they're working on it as we speak. Jim Johnson. So, okay. Okay, so same concern. Thank you. Sean Lloyd. Yes. Good. If you could just do the same thing, turn the mic on and provide your information and.
Yeah, Sean Lloyd. I'm 4773 Bath Road, so a few down from from Jim. I have major concerns about the water as well. I think 2.4 near in your management guide there is the Eastwood drainage that is not draining. So every time we get 20 to 30 mils of rain now, my basement fills unlike his farmer fields, but it's a current problem today. So I major concerns of the same thing. There's no, there's no water plants that I can see on the on the current plant. So I'd like to address that.
Okay. Thank you. And Jason? Data? Okay. It's all good. Okay, that's the list that registered as they were coming in. So I will just open it up in chambers. If there's anyone else in chambers that wishes to speak to this item, please come forward and we can receive it at this time. A nun. I will go to the virtual audience and just ask again if you wish to speak on this item. If you could use the raised hand feature, then we will bring you into the meeting.
Mr. Mayor, we have one person with their hand raised. We're just letting them in.
Okay, thank you.
Sam, if you could hear us, can you turn on your video and audio?
Sorry, it's a joint account with my spouse. This is actually Ryan speaking.
Okay. Could you provide your name and address and what your provide any information regarding this public meeting?
Yeah, my name is Ryan Hobbs. I'm I'm from Switzerville Road. I'm glad to see you, mayor. I was concerned something happened to you after a couple of my recent emails have gone unresponded to. I just wanted to ask if you think the township is really ready to look after an even larger territory with more and more new roads being built for these neighborhoods. When it seems like there's a lot of existing roads in Los that aren't always kept in satisfactory condition. We have quite a few poor shaped gravel roads like Switzerville Road that are begging for resurfacing, but it seems like the township tends to focus more on these details for communities that don't even exist yet. So some of my neighbors, they're they're feeling pretty tired of seemingly being pushed further down the priority list in this township. And when we're really in needs of improvements for essential infrastructure like our roads. And they just kind of seem to be ignored. I guess another question is, when are we going to maybe see government grants that can go towards converting gravel roads to more hardtop surfaces?
Hey, thank you. The first part of that, I believe there's we're doing this to fulfill legislation as well, but I'll let staff speak to that at the tail end after they've received all of the questions. And as far as the government grants, that would, that's a good question. We are in a provincial election right now. There's a good chance we'll be going into a federal election, so that might be a question better suited for the candidates. Thank you. If there is anyone else in the virtual meeting that wishes to speak this evening, if you could use the raised hand feature, we would be able to bring you into the meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I don't see anyone else with their hand raised.
My chair just sank, so I just got to back up where I can see everyone again. Okay, thank you. So with that, that concludes the input from the public meeting. I would just ask staff if you have any responses to some of the comments that were made this evening.
Thank you through your worship. So to address the first couple there in regards to the listing of the barn, background on that is the the barn on that on that property was listed through the Heritage Act a couple of years ago. All properties that are currently on our interest list will be removed from the register in January 2027 as per recent Ontario Heritage Act changes. However, if there's interest to remove a property from the list prior to that time, the owner of the property could submit a request at any time. At that point, staff would bring it to our heritage committee and then the heritage committee's recommendation would come before council for a decision. So we would not initiate any changes to any listed properties through this process. That would be have to be initiated by the owner of the property. And then I can just I'll speak to one more and then I'll turn it over to Luke on the engineering related ones. Just last comments in regards to new development areas and the township being ready and focusing on details for communities that don't exist. The provincial planning statement requires municipalities to do it. We're provided to provide growth for at least up to 30 year time period. And we have to have a certain amount of designated lands in and this is in the urban serviced area is where that requirement comes from. So that's a requirement from provincial from provincial legislation, which then stems down to our policy planning documents. And this is being implemented particularly in Amherstview West because it's almost that build out in terms of our current development areas. And we won't be meeting provincial standards without initiating this project. Thank you. And I'll just turn to Luke on the engineering related.
Yep, thank you and through you, Mr. Mayor. So there was several questions just related to the stormwater management. So I've asked our team of the clerks to just put up the land use plan to sort of show where the stormwater management ponds are planned to be located. So there's two pieces that I'd like to address for the question. So the first is sort of the current plan. And then there was a bit of a question related about future plans, so I'll I'll touch on that in a minute. So when we look at the current plan, if you look at the map that's up on the screen, you can see sort of two, I'll call them light blue hatched areas. So those are the planned stormwater management facilities that will be used to direct all stormwater management from any new growth within the the planned 25 year horizon. So roughly speaking, there's a topographical divide where I'll say the Amherst Drive extension is about the high point. So anything south of Amherst Drive is going to drain south to that light blue hatched area adjacent to Lake Ontario. And so all the flows for the the light yellow, the low residential, the medium residential, the mixed use and and high density that are shown there in that south of Amherst Drive piece will be directed to that pond. And then out to Lake Ontario from there. And then anything north of that Amherst Drive extension would go to the other pond that's shown adjacent to the Meadow Marsh area in that sort of central north western section there. So all the new growth and development will be treated for quality and quantity through those planned ponds. And further information will come on from those during the detailed design reviews of the respective subdivisions. In terms of the areas relating to the Edgewood Pond, sorry, Edgewood Municipal Drain and sort of that southern space. So the gray area in the the southern component there, that is planned not within the 25 year timeframe, but that is outside of that. So if development does proceed there, it would presumably be, you know, 25 to 50 years from now, roughly speaking. So we did look at this area through the plan and that's why we are showing a road network. But again, it is very conceptual in nature just to show how everything's going to tie through. One of the questioners, the residents asked was relating to there was a pond shown on a previous concept in that area. That is still shown in the future servicing. That pond will still be required, but only once those lands go to get developed. Because at that time, then you'd be increasing your your imperviousness and increasing more stormwater runoff. And so we would then place a pond in that area to control the the stormwater quality and quantity. But that said, again, those are all very far down the road plans. That that's more the 25 to 50 year timeframe is when that would be looking at. So we have identified that as a need, but not within the current secondary plan as presented.
Okay, thank you. Council, any final questions? Counselor Willis?
Thank you through your worship to Mr. McDonald. If we could put that map back up, please. So as I understand it from the people that spoke, they already have drainage issues where they are. We're not developing that right now, but we're also not planning anything in this that's going to help them with their current situation. Is that correct?
Through you, that's correct.
Counsel, any other questions at this time? If you could just take that back down so I can see the other two members. Thank you. Okay, I'll just ask again because I couldn't see two members. Are there any further questions for staff at this time from council? Counselor Prager?
I think it was Mr. Lloyd mentioned the Eastwood Drain. Could you just show us on the map where that is? And, you know, basically explain to us what it means if they're having water problems and just wondering what's what's the correlation there?
Yep, so through you, Mr. Mayor. So the Edgewood Municipal Drain is actually identified on this map. You can see this sort of, I'll call it a dark gray hatch that's a very irregular shape across the southern portion extending down to the Edgewood Road. So that is the municipal drain. So municipal drains are governed through the Drainage Act. And they follow a very strict legislative process about who contributes financially to them, when improvements need to be made and so on. Generally speaking, residents can make applications through the Drainage Act. And the township would then retain a drainage supervisor to evaluate that and make recommendations as to any upgrades that may be required under the municipal drain. Then based on the contributing areas and the benefiting residents, costs would be proportioned to those parties and they would not come from the municipal tax as to the cost to make upgrades to the municipal drain. So this drain is relatively new. So this drain is relatively new speaking as compared to other municipal drains. This drain was established, I'll say, I don't know the exact year, but. Sure, yeah.
Four years ago.
Yeah.
I was gonna say five.
Yeah. It. Yeah. So that's the general background on municipal drains.
If we could just complete the public session part, and then you can certainly have a conversation to clarify anything else, okay? Thanks. Counsel Budrick.
I was just gonna ask staff if a resident had those problems, who they would contact, and how they would go about getting this started.
They can contact me, and I can speak with the resident in question after the meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions at this time from counsel? Seeing none. Thank you very much for your presentations and your answers. And also thank you to staff, or sorry, everyone in the public in chambers and virtual that brought valid, very valid points towards, back to counsel for this. This item. So at this time, if there's. There were no further questions, we do have a recommendation that I believe staff have prepared. To put on the screen. That allows everyone to see it, and also without making any presumption, when counsel wants to make a, make a motion if it is for this one, instead of the need to read it all. It's very detailed. We can just make a motion that for the recommendation as presented on the screen. So do we have a motion to put forward this evening? Counsel Pradrick.
I would move that the recommendation received in report SR 2830 as on screen be adopted.
So moved, seconded by Counsel Willis. Mover, any comments?
Just a brief comment that I think staff have done a great job to engage the public to move forward. And it's given the, I guess, the climate right now, it's best, let's get at it and get it started.
Thank you. Seconder? Other members of counsel, any comments? Seeing none, I would just reiterate a little bit of that. I would just like to thank staff, which have been working on this for quite some time, as was mentioned in the, in, in the presentation. I remember when this started, and then suddenly everything was virtual. Everything changed, but this still continued. And, and then we were able to come back and complete it in person, which, which is great. WSP did a lot of work on this, it was great, they worked well with staff. I also want to thank the public that gave input through the whole process. We had developers, we have property owners, we have just people that are very interested in this development. And they all stayed engaged, they stayed in, they provided information, suggestions. And it really made it so that at this point, it's the best possible document, I believe, and plan to go forward for the township. So I want to thank everyone for that. And with that, I will call the question. All in favor? Motion is passed. And just before we move on, I just want to recognize one person that did put a lot of work into this, Bowden. Not only were you there at the beginning, and you're sitting here at the end, but from what I. From what I recall, this is your last official duty here this evening. You've been with the township for a number of years now. And certainly your knowledge and your demeanor and everything just made you fit so well and be able to take the lead and really. Bring to fruition some key projects that the township was working on. And this is a great example. And everything that I said about all the collaboration and, and everything, you were one of the key players that either received the information or worked through it to try and resolve. And it was great, the whole team, team effort, great leadership on your part as well. So just after the years of service, and of course, we had this opportunity. Thank you so much for everything you've done for Loyalist Township, the residents of Loyalist Township. Thank you for advancing it as we have this evening, and we wish you well. Okay. So now I gotta get back in my spot. Open forum. For the first, so 15, and to anyone that's in chambers, if you wish to stay, please feel free. If you would rather, if you have other things to do and would rather head out, we just ask that you exit quietly, and we'll just carry on with the meeting and, and finish up the agenda. Thank you. So we set aside 15 minutes for open forum. And it's for anyone who wishes to speak and regis, can register in advance. We didn't have anyone do that. I will ask in chambers if anyone is interested in speaking, and then I will go to the virtual audience. It is, the topics that can be spoke on are items which are on the agenda. And you have three minutes to provide your information. So I will just look, we do have in chambers, is there anyone that had anything to share this evening in open forum on an item that is on the agenda? Seeing none. I will go to the virtual audience. Is there anyone in the virtual audience that wishes to speak this evening on an item other than the one we just dealt with, the public meeting? That's on the agenda. If anyone wished to speak to it, please use the raised hand feature so we can bring you into the meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I don't see anyone with their hand raised.
Seeing none, thank you. That completes the open forum, there's no delegations. Items for consideration, Lakeside Ponds, Phase Two, Stage Three, Block 106, Plan 29M69, Part Lot Control Request. Welcome. And I would just ask, do you have anything to provide this evening, or just here to answer questions?
So the mayor just here to answer questions.
Thank you. Sorry, we're just running into a little technical difficulty, we're just going to hold the meeting until we have it back. I guess we. And we're back. Counsel, any questions for staff at this time on this item? Seeing none. I would ask counsel, do you have a motion to put forward this evening? Deputy Mayor.
Through you, your worship, I would move that the report from the Development Services Division, February 11th, 2025, re-Lakeside Ponds, Phase Two, Stage Three, Block 106, Part Lot Control Request be received. And the two that Bylaw 2025-7 being a bylaw to lift part lot control requirements for Block 106 on registered Plan 29M-69 for the Lakeside Ponds, Phase Two, Stage Three, Plan of Subdivision, be enacted and passed.
So moved, seconded by Counsel Parks. Any comments from the mover? Seconder, other members? Call the question, all in favor? Motion is passed. Hydro easement 363, Amherst Drive, Amherstview Fire Station. Anything to add, or is just for the questions?
Through the mayor, just here for questions.
Okay. Counsel, any questions this evening? Seeing none. We have a recommendation, would someone like to make a motion? Counsel Willis.
I move that the report from the Development Services Division date at February 11th, re-Hydro Easement 363, Amherst Drive, Amherstview Fire Station be received. And the Bylaw 2025-12 being a bylaw to authorize the mayor and chief administrative officer to execute documentation with Ontario Hydro Limited pertaining to an easement between Hydro One Limited and the Corporation of Loyalist Township on property municipally addressed as 363 Amherst Drive be enacted and passed.
So moved. We have a seconder, Counsel Budrick. Mover, any comments? Seconder, other members? Call the question, all in favor? Motion is passed. Thank you. At this time, we have, we will, it's time to go into Committee of the Whole. Typically, the deputy mayor chairs the Committee of the Whole. But the procedural bylaw does not permit it virtually. So according to procedural bylaw, counsel has to designate someone to chair this portion of the meeting in, instead of the deputy. So we would ask for someone to be designated. Deputy Mayor? Whoops.
Wrong button.
Oof, you're back.
I, I would move to designate the mayor to chair the meeting.
And. Seconded by Counsel Pradrick, thank you. Anyone else, or any comments? Seeing none, I'll call the question, all in favor? Motion is passed. Okay. So we will, okay, so we still need our motion, the recommendation, did we have anything?
If, if it's okay with the chair and counsel, we could put those two motions together. So it would read that counsel now resolving to Committee of the Whole, and that as part of, as per Section 812H of the procedural bylaw, that Mayor Hegador be appointed as a presiding officer for the February 11th, 2025 Committee of the Whole Meeting.
Okay, thank you. Is that acceptable to the mover? Put them both together? Okay, and the seconder? Okay. Thank you. That cleans it up. So at that, in that case, I'll call the meeting, the Committee of the Whole meeting to order at 7:03. Are there any declarations of pecuniary interest or the general nature there of Board Committee of the Whole? Seeing none. We have a few items for consideration. The first one is counsel composition and ward boundary review interim report. Just taking a minute for staff to come to the front. Welcome. Do you have some additional information at this time?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the committee, the consultants have a presentation to share with, with you tonight.
Thank you.
Hi, counsel, apologies, it doesn't look like I have authority to share my screen.
I'm just looking.
Is everyone able to see my screen?
Yes, we can see it in chambers.
Perfect. I'll let Dr. Williams take over.
Thank you.
Evening, Mr. Williams.
Thank you, I missed a bit of that, Mr. Mayor, thank you for this opportunity to bring counsel up to date on our counsel composition and ward boundary review. Rather a large mouthful, but we are making good progress, and we're entering the, I think, the most interesting phase of all of this very shortly. I will run through some points here before we get to our examples of possible modifications to your, your system. But I'll start with the context for those who have not been following along. Counsel, the composition of counsel is actually a responsibility assigned to a municipal council in a local municipality under Section 217 of the Municipal Act. And of course, it starts with some very basic points, and not much else, but it starts with some basic points. The minimum size for a council of a municipal, a local municipality is five, one of whom shall be the head of council. So that's the, the threshold, if you will, and, and things could go from there. So beyond that, there are no principles in there to determine how large a council should be. There are no standards that if your population is such and such, your council should be that size, whatever. There's no formula that you can apply to determine the right size. I'll mention in passing that some of these issues are touched on in the municipal, in the Education Act, or in relation to school boards, but not to council. So there's nothing involved in terms of deciding through legislation how big your council is. You're currently at seven members, two above the minimum, so we're working from that start, that starting point. And in passing, noting that the composition varies widely across Ontario, and there is information that we have shared with you at various times about that. Now, if we're going to be dealing with wards, and I, I think it's fair to say that there is virtually no appetite to eliminate wards in Loyalist Township. We shift over to issues under Section 222, which is the authority for counsel to divide the municipality into wards, to re-divide the municipality, or to eliminate the wards altogether. So we're working toward a, a reallocation of, a re-division, rather, of wards for the municipality. This process is driven in our perspective by four important principles, core principles that we bring to this exercise. As I said, there's nothing in legislation, what we're working on are standard practices, best practices, other approaches that we've used across Ontario and are applying here in, in Loyalist. And the representation by population principle is, is an important one, but also growth. And of course, you spent time tonight talking about a very important component of growth, upcoming growth in Loyalist Township, and that needs to be taken into account. Then the geographic and topographical boundaries, the goal is not to simply draw a line on a map that bears no relationship to the, the natural environment, if you will, of, of the township. And then the fourth principle has to do with communities of interest. What are the parts of, of Loyalist that have relationships with one another, that share perspectives, share history? Those kinds of things are part of the mixture of, of a ward design. Overall, the goal is to create a system that tries to achieve equal representation and voter parity. As I said, that, that is a driving force, but it's blended in with these others, leading to what we refer to as the principle of effective representation. So it's a, it's a relative concept that we will be applying. And we start in, as we'll see on the next slide, with your current system. If we're going to review the system, the first point is to say, well, it doesn't work, is it still valid? Is it, is it a viable approach to represent the residents of Loyalist Township in the 2026 election and beyond? And as you can see, and as I'm sure all of you would recognize, there are certain limitations around that. In particular, the, the distribution of population within the, with, between and among the three wards. And some of the other issues that relate to that, and growth again, will make that issue even more of a concern. And, and our approach basically is that in looking at the current system, our, our conclusion is pretty clear. It needs to be reviewed and, and considered as a, a step towards something that will serve the community better over the next two to three elections, if possible. The process, as we'll see in the next slide, is, is well underway, and I've spoken with all of you in person, if I'm not mistaken, or, or live at various times over the last few months. We did a council workshop in this format, we did interviews, we prepared some background materials, we held public engagement back in October. And I, again, I met some of you at that point in, in, in your locations. We're now at, we're We're now at what we're calling preliminary options, although the phrase we're going to be using a little later is examples. But we're basically saying, all right, if the problem, if the current system has some limitations, what are possible ways of addressing those limitations? And as we have seen, there's a number of different ways to do that. This will be followed fairly closely by a round of public engagement, and that will begin as early as February 19, where there will be two sessions and then two further ones on February 24 in four different locations across the municipality. The responses we get from that, and we will seek that through surveys and other forms of feedback, will allow us to decide what we should recommend to you as final options. We're not at that stage yet, but we will come to that a little later in the winter and come back with a proposal for a modification to your current system to basically re-divide the municipality. So what we're going to talk about in the next little while, and those of you who may have already looked at the preliminary report, will know that we have a number of ideas that we're bringing forward. We're calling them here examples. Some of them may appear to some residents and to some members of council as improbable, far-fetched, whatever. The point is, we have to try to figure out how to bring these principles that I talked about before into some kind of plausible combination, a scenario that we believe will work. And that is not a straightforward process for the reasons I'll touch on on the next slide. And again, I'm not telling you things that you don't know, but this is part of the challenge. What we're trying to address are what I would call here singular features of Loyalist Township. Some municipalities have one or more of these features. Loyalist has all three of them, and we have to try to figure out how to bring them together into some kind of workable and defensible electoral arrangement. The issue of the island, of course, which is a distinctive part of the municipality. How is that to be treated in a ward system? We also have what I call an asymmetrical ward system. One ward elects three people, other wards elect only one each. So the electors themselves are given a different opportunity to influence the outcome of an election, and in our view, that is not an approach that is consistent with equitable representation, so we need to think about how that might be addressed. The third one comes out of that current system where your present ward three, which is essentially the former Ernest Town Township, is itself a very large, complicated unit that elects three people. And in a way, it's like an at-large election. It covers everything from Amherst View up to Switzerville and all kinds of settlements and areas in between. And it's not, if you will, a typical ward, certainly a ward that's different from the other two. So what we've got to try to do is work with those influences, those features, to come up with another approach. And as I say at the bottom, there's no single right answer to address the shortcomings in the present system. So what we will be dealing with are a number of ways to try to blend those together for consideration. As I said a moment ago, we'll be taking these out to the community, starting on February 19, to just get some sense of which of these things work, what are the approaches that the community feels are appropriate, and what the challenges are that we're trying to meet, and look for support for some of these ideas as what we will come back to you with at the final stage. So we'll move on to the first example, and as I said, some people may gasp at some of these maps, and you know, that's understandable. This is a system, the system you've got has been in place for a long time, but given what I've just said, how do we fix it? What are the things that we can work with to lead to a new arrangement? The first two examples, to be very clear, continue with the idea that Amherst Island is a self-contained ward. It is not modified at all. So for those who reside there or who represent it, nothing's changed in here. But of course, that's only one of five seats on council. So how do we go about trying to create a system, again, addressing that at-large model, where we basically say, you've got a large geographic area that should be divided in some fashion? So this approach basically says, let's start with those communities of interest, Amherst View itself, Bath itself, and then the remainder divided up into two parts using, in some part of it, Highway 401, just to say, all right, here are some things, they're not perfect, but they have certain things in common. Does it work? And we've offered some, our assessment about whether they work or not, and it's interesting that in the first take, they don't really work very well when it comes to population, but we get around some of the problems that we noted earlier. The second example, again, is also dealing with a single island ward, but the goal here is to create four wards on the mainland, if you will, that come very close to population parity, which of course is not the case now. Can we do that? Well, to do that, we end up dividing Amherst View into two parts, sorry, yes, into two parts, to try to get to those wards that are reasonably balanced in population in the short term and to some extent, the long term. So it's a way of trying to do that, working with roadways and other clusters of population to balance those things out toward this goal. The next example, it begins this process of combining the island with some part of the mainland, and as I, I think, as you will find in the report, the question becomes, does any of that make any sense? Is there a plausible part of current mainland Loyalist Township that would make sense as a, if you will, a partner with Amherst Island? So we've tried a couple of ways of doing that, and again, our feedback is, is that what people want? And I will mention in passing that for a lot of people, the idea of doing this was not something terribly appealing, and we made a reference in the report, by the way, to the exercise that the Clerk's Office did with some schoolchildren back in the fall, saying, asking them to draw new ward boundaries for Loyalist Township, and there were 31 examples submitted, every one of them kept Amherst Island by itself. So this is territory that will take some getting used to, but again, it's aiming toward a better system of representation. As you can see, the balance of population is better than the current system, and it's, in our view, reasonably successful in providing effective representation. Example four does that again, and achieves a really very strong population parity in the future. Again, that was one of the principles. Do you grow into the system of parity? And of course, one of the key issues there is the topic, again, that you spent a few minutes on earlier today with that Amherst View West secondary plan. There's a massive amount of growth, population growth expected there, and has to be accommodated in some ways, and in this version, it's done with a fairly compact pair of wards in the Amherst View area and the rest of the mainland divided in a different way. Again, in our view, largely successful if our goal is to provide that balance between the principles involved here. Example five, and I'm not spending a lot of time on these now because these are intended to stimulate discussion, but we try to balance the growth off here between the various parts of the municipality over the longer term. And in many ways, it's quite a reasonably successful example of how to balance that growth out while keeping in mind the various communities that are there. Again, Amherst View into two wards and Amherst Island connected essentially with Bath and the immediate area. Example six is another way of doing that, and again, as we suggested a few minutes ago, there's no single way to do it, and what we've been trying to try to figure out is different ways of taking the land area and the communities within it and grouping them together in a different way. And as you can see in this version, it's certainly an unconventional one, and I'm the first to admit that, but it creates a surprising level of balance in the longer term across the entire municipality. Seventh and last example changes the game a little bit, if you will. Part of what we end up doing is basically trying out different ideas, and the six examples that we've looked at so far are not the only ones we've looked at. We tried a number of others and discarded them. And in the course of looking at how to achieve these various principles, this example came through by trying to adjust the, actually adjust the number of councillors, and it would in fact involve a reduction in the size of council, but a very strong system of representation in that process. So it's a two-stage process at work, and it's simply basically an approach to see if we could apply the guiding principles in a way that encompasses the entire municipality. And we make it very clear, just so you're aware of that, we're very, very clear that we did not hear this idea of reducing the size of council from the community. This was essentially an idea that came out of the team about saying, could we in fact balance these out in a different way without working with the five? And it's very clear that it has a lot of strength, but it's not something driven by popular pressure, and I don't want to give the wrong idea that, that populate, or sorry, that responses of the community are what is driving this. They are used as insights into what we can do, and this is an example of, if you will, professional experience, saying, well, if we actually worked with a different number, could we achieve some of these five goals? And that's what we've got in example seven. So I don't have other things that I need to say here, other than we will look forward to sharing this information with the community. The information through the preliminary options report will be on the township website, I hope, as early as tomorrow, and there'll be other information that we bring to these sessions, starting on February 19 and 24. And we will be asking for the community to come along to those meetings and tell us what they like and don't like, and why they like things, or why they have reservations about some of those, and that we can use. The survey is also going to be available, I believe, fairly quickly, but that'll be open until March 9 for feedback from the community. So I will just basically turn things over to the mayor again at this point, and happy to take some questions.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Can we just stop sharing the screen again so that we can see all the members? Thank you. Thank you for that information. So staff, did you have anything additional to your just presentation? Thank you. So at this time, as you can see, the, basically, the recommendation is to commence public engagement on the information we just received, but if there's any questions for clarification, we can certainly present them at this time. I'm just being very careful that I... We've got lots of options. I'm really interested to see what the public have to say. Councillor Prodrig.
Thank you, Worship. It's through you. Thank you, Dr. Williams. It's been about 35 years since I took stats, so I'm just going to ask you to look at example one for one second, and just, I want to make sure I got this right. So when you say population variance by ward, one would be a perfect, everything's equal in terms of numbers? Is that the way I read?
Let me just, right, yeah. What we use is, we have what we calculate as what we call the optimal point. The problem with your current system is that there isn't an optimal point because the wards elect a different number of people. But in a single-member ward arrangement, the optimal point would be your total population divided by five, and then we give a yes if it's within 5% on either side of that. So it's very, very close to that ideal distribution of population across the municipality. Further out, we can still accept some variation because it's a mixture of suburban areas, of rural areas, of small town, and so we need a bit more flexibility in there, which is why we will work with up to 25% in our calculations.
And just one more on process, and I'm sort of reading from what you've said. So the seven examples, they're not necessarily based on any examples right now, it's more your, you and your staff sitting down and drawing out some ideas, is that fair to say?
It's through you, Mr. Mayor. I would say that that is probably the case. We're bringing our expertise in this area. We've, the team has been involved in over 35 of these reviews across the province, but we're dealing with some unique situations like I laid out in that early slide. You've got to, how do we deal with the island? How do we deal with wards that elect different numbers of people? How do we deal with one ward that is almost the entire municipality that's elected one way and the others are different? So there's very little we can build on specifically out of that. Obviously, some of them do keep the island ward and try to work as close as possible to the current ward too, but beyond that, it's a matter of just trying to see what does make sense, at least in a general way. We're using roadways or other boundaries that are plausible, trying to group together communities as best we can. And again, given the distances and the dispersal, it's not easy to come up with a coherent combination. If we were trying to do, if you were going to try to move from, say, five councillors to seven or eight or nine, some of them might look a little more coherent, but that's not our approach here. We're going to work with five with the idea of the four, just as a case of saying, look what happens if we try to do this other arrangement.
Other members of council, any questions at this time? Seeing none? I would entertain a motion. Deputy Mayor?
Through you, your Worship. I would move that the report from the Clerk's Division dated February 11, 2025, re-council composition and ward boundary review interim report be received, and two, that council directs staff to commence public engagement on the council composition and ward boundary review options proposed in attachment one.
So moved. Seconded by councillor Anis. Any comments from the mover?
Only my thanks to Dr. Williams and the staff, and to echo the mayor's comments that I look forward to more public engagement on this and to keep the process moving.
Secunder? They don't. Other members of council? Call the question. In favour? Motion has passed. Thank you, Dr. Williams.
Thank you. See everybody soon.
Next one is our revised fundraising policies. The AAO is coming forward. Welcome. Is there anything additional you have this evening or just here to answer questions?
I'm just here to answer questions about these policies specifically, but just a bit of an update of where this is with respect to our capital fundraising plan for the WJ Henderson Community Centre. We are working diligently to finalize these policies, other documentation for canvassers, case for support, our campaign, our capital campaign communications plan. So we're working to finalize those and to recruit members who are going to be part of the capital campaign to actually start it and start asking for funds to go forward. So we're on the cusp of anticipating finalizing this documentation. uh to go to go forward. So we're on the cusp of anticipating finalizing this documentation and this sort of recruitment process by the end of February. Uh and then we'll be starting with major gift requests. And the intent is that we will be, this will be the quiet phase of the campaign and we'll be looking to get some of the the very major gifts uh for the campaign, which will be up to about fifty percent before we probably make any announcements, but then it'll it'll gather steam rather quickly uh and move to the public phase as we as we get towards the end of the campaign. So um we're like speedy cars Alice here, just waiting to to take off. And uh this is just um some of the documentation um that allows us to launch this campaign.
Thank you. Are there any questions for clarification, the C A O from council? Seeing none? We do have a recommendation. Would someone like to put a motion on the floor? Councillor Williams.
Move that the report from the Chief Administrative Officer dated February eleventh, twenty-twenty-five, re-revised fundraising policies be received. Two, that council approved the draft donations policy, asset naming policy, and sponsorship and naming rights policy. And three, that the donation policy adopted by Bylaw twenty-twenty-two dash zero four nine and the naming of Loyalist Township Parks and Parks Parks Public Recognition for contributions to Township Parks Procedures. Council Minute Number two thousand and four dot twenty-five dot eighteen be hereby rescinded.
So moved. Do we have a seconder? Councillor Pradak. Mover? Any comments? Seconder?
I I would just say it it's a good step forward to bring all of our uh sort of uh fundraising and policies together in one place, because I think up till now, there's been sort of some nebulous. I'll leave it at that policy and how it's interpreted.
Any other members of council have anything to share? Seeing none, we'll call the question. All in favor? Motion is passed. Thank you. Asset management, developing proposed levels of service. Mr. Scott's coming forward. Oh, Ms. Campbell, too. Welcome. So you have a presentation that you'd like to share this evening?
Thank you, your worship. Um tonight I'll be presenting um a presentation tonight on developing proposed levels of service and our next phase of our asset management program. So asset management is a critical element to ensuring our infrastructure remains sustainable and efficient. Establishing appropriate levels of service is fundamental because it sets the performance standards that guide our operations. During the presentation, I'll outline the framework for defining and implementing these service levels and discuss how they play a pivotal role in aligning our assets with both community expectations and organizational needs. I should point out that it is not the intent to get into um the level of service for specific assets. Rather, uh at the end of the presentation, staff will be looking for any high-level direction that uh should be included when developing proposed levels of service. Options for the proposed levels of service, along with financial implications, will be brought back to a future council meeting. Under Ontario Regulation five eighty-eight seventeen, otherwise known as the Infrastructure uh for Jobs and Prosperity Act, the township is required to meet certain timelines regarding asset management. The township has completed the first three phases of our obligations. And in phase four, the asset management uh plan will need to include the proposed levels of service for each category of assets and what activities will be required to meet the proposed levels of service and a strategy to fund those activities. Yeah, I I can't see it when I'm sorry. Wasn't going. Um what are level uh so what are levels of service? So levels of service are the performance benchmarks that determine the quality uh capacity and reliability of our assets. Essentially, they are uh the standards we set to ensure that our service uh delivery beats specific measurable expectations. And these benchmarks consider technical feasibility, um regulatory requirements and the need of our stakeholders while balancing service, risk, maximum value and affordability. Operational capital levels of service must be aligned to ensure the sustainable uh to ensure sus- sustainable asset management. Think of levels of service as a bridge between our operational capabilities and the service outcomes our community expects. Levels of service are generally grouped into three categories: corporate, strategic, uh sorry, corporate or strategic uh community and technical. So by establishing clear levels of service, uh we ensure that our infrastructure is closely aligned with the needs of the community. It also plays a key role in financial planning and risk management by providing measurable benchmarks to facilitate budgeting and investment prioritization. Additionally, clear levels of service enhance accountability uh and decision-making across the organization, ensuring that performance targets are met and improvements are continuously made. A well-defined level of service framework, uh sorry, a well-defined level of service framework helps us comply with regulatory standards and promotes environmental uh sustainability um which are essential to the long-term operational efficiency and community trust. Can you manually move it? Thank you. Um key components of the level of service. Um so first, we consider customer outcomes, which focus on the availability, reliability, responsiveness and safety of our services. And then we look at technical performance, ensuring that our assets operate at optimum capacity, efficiency, condition and compliance. Financial sustainability is another critical component. And this involves managing affordability and funding strategies while accounting for lifecycle costs. And lastly, we address regulatory environmental compliance, ensuring our standards meet legal requirements and sustainability goals. In essence, these components work together to create a cohesive framework. Strong technical performance underpins reliable customer outcomes. Financial stability, uh so sorry, financial sustainability ensures that the necessary investments in technology and maintenance are made. And regulatory and environmental compliance guarantees that operations remain responsive and forward-looking. And together, they ensure that asset management is effective, resilient and aligned with both our short-term needs and long-term strategic goals. Next slide, please. To establish a level of uh service framework, we begin with assessing the current performance of our assets, which gives us a baseline. And next, we engage with our stakeholders to gather insights and understand expectations. With this information, we can define measurable levels of service objectives and perform and develop performance metrics and targets. It's also essential to align these objectives with our available budget and resources. And finally, we incorporate a cycle of monitoring, reviewing and improving our process to ensure our framework remains dynamic and responsive to the changing conditions. Asset management is a cycle of continuous improvement. Next slide. Stakeholder engagement is a critical part of developing effective levels of service. And this slide highlights the importance of involving everyone from community members and government agencies to businesses and internal staff. A collaborative process not only ensures that our service levels reflect the real needs and expectations of our stakeholders, but also builds consensus, transparency, ultimately leading to a more robust and uh implementable level of service objectives. Staff are proposing to utilize the Engage Loyalist platform to seek additional community input that builds upon other engagements. Next slide. Setting SMART objectives is essential to ensure their levels of service are actionable and effective. SMART stands for Specific, Measurable, Achievable, Relevant and Time-bound. And by using this framework, we create clear and concise objectives. A specific objective might detail what performance levels we expect. While being measured allows us uh measurable allows us to track progress over time. It must be achievable, given our current resources and relevant to our strategic priorities and bound by timeline for accountability. And this approach lays the groundwork for continuous improvement in asset management. Example of a SMART goal is within the next twelve months, reduce uh we would reduce the unplanned downtime of our critical infrastructure assets by fifteen percent by implementing a predictive maintenance program. And this program will include monthly uh performance monitoring, quarterly review meetings and targeted investments in advance um in advanced diagnostic tools, ultimately improving service reliability and customer satisfaction. Next slide. Performance metrics are the tools we use to evaluate whether our assets meet the defined levels of service. And these include reliability metrics such as downtime and failure rates, quality metrics like customer satisfaction and compliance levels, cost efficiency measures such as uh cost per unit of service, and environmental impact indicators including carbon footprint and energy efficiency. These metrics provide us with a quantitative uh basis to assess performance, identify areas for improvement and make data data-driven decisions. Next slide. So the relationship between desired level of service and available funding is a balancing act that plays critical roles in asset management. The desired level of service represents the quality, performance and reliability targets that an organization aims to deliver to its customers or stakeholders. High service levels might include rapid response times, minimal disruptions and high reliability. Available funding determines what can actually be achieved. High service levels often require significant investments in maintenance, upgrades, technology and human resources. So some key considerations, when funding is limited, organizations must prioritize must prior prioritize, yes, sorry, prioritize which aspects of the service are most critical. This often means making trade-offs between achieving an ideal level of service and what is practically affordable. Decision-makers might have to focus on assets that are critical to safety and reliability first, while less critical assets may operate at a lower service level until additional funding is available. A clear level of service helps align uh investments with uh with budgets by knowing the performance standards required. Organizations can estimate that the investment needed and or can estimate the investment needed and plan accordingly. Strategic planning might involve phased investments where immediate, high-priority needs are addressed first with a roadmap for future enhancements as more funds become available. Determining the desired level of service requires an uh evaluation of the benefits associated with the different service levels uh against the costing of achieving them through a cost-benefit analysis. And this analysis often looks uh involves looking at the long-term operational and maintenance costs. Higher upfront investments might uh reduce lifecycle uh costs by preventing frequent uh failures or expensive emergency repairs. And aligning levels of service with available funding helps in managing risks. Overcommitting financially to achieve an unsustainable level uh service level can strain resources and lead to financial instability. Conversely, underfunding essential asset management uh needs can result in deteriorating service quality and increased long-term costs due to reactive rather than proactive maintenance. Next slide, please. Regulation mandates municipalities conduct a thorough risk assessment. And this includes identifying assets or service areas where funding shortfalls could jeopardize performance. Municipalities are required to prior prioritize uh prioritize um risks, focusing on those that impact safety, compliance and essential service delivery. By establishing measurable service uh performance standards, levels of service help identify areas where assets may be vulnerable, such as potential failures or performance shortfalls. And this enables organizations to prioritize risks uh based on the impact of service delivery. With clearly defined levels of service, organizations can monitor asset performance closely. And when performance metrics indicate a deviation from the desired level, it signals a potential risk. And this early warning system allows for proactive maintenance and timely interventions, reducing the likelihood of catastrophic failures. Levels of service rely on uh quantitative me- metrics uh which produce a solid foundation for assessing risk. And by tracking these metrics, organizations can analyze trends uh over time, identify emerging risks or sorry, emerging issues and make informed decisions about where to invest in preventative measures or upgrades. And understanding the performance uh risks associated with assets enables organizations to allocate the resources uh more efficiently. And this includes budgeting for repairs, replacements or system upgrades that mitigate identified risks. Moreover, clear levels of service facilitate the development of contingency plans to manage unexpected failures or service disruptions. A well-defined level of service framework builds trust with stakeholders by demonstrating a commitment to maintaining high performance and mitigating risks. It also ensures compliance with regulatory requirements, uh reducing the risk of legal issues and reputational damage. Levels of service not only set the expected performance standards, but they also serve as a critical tool for identifying, addressing and mitigating risks. And this proactive approach ensures that asset management remains both efficient and resilient in the face of potential challenges. Next slide, please. Establishing levels of service is not a one-time event. It requires ongoing monitoring and adaptation. Uh we implement monitoring tools and key performance indicators to track our progress. And regular reviews of performance against our targets allows us to adjust our strategies as conditions evolve. This continuous feedback loop is crucial to ensuring that our asset management remains proactive, responsive and aligned with both current and future needs. Starting in twenty-twenty-six, annual reviews will be required by the regulation to be approved by council. The annual reviews must address the municipality's progress in implementing the asset management plan, any factors impeding the municipality's ability to implement its asset management plan and a strategy to address those factors. Slide please. Ontario Regulation five eighty-eight seventeen requires municipalities to establish establish proposed levels of service as part of their asset management planning. Specifically, it mandates that municipalities um must must set proposed levels of service for each asset category over a ten-year period. The proposed levels of service must be supported by both qualitative descriptions and quantitative metrics uh as per the regulation's schedules. Municipalities must address lifecycle costs and risks associated with maintaining, improving or changing the level of service. The proposed levels of service should consider current performance levels, anticipated growth and future demands on infrastructure. The proposed levels uh proposed service levels must be linked to financial planning and budget constraints, ensuring feasibility over the ten-year period. And the deadline requires municipalities to integrate proposed levels of service into their fully developed asset management plans. Slide please. Ontario uh regulation or the regulation specifies the community and technical levels of service for core assets. So um for those core assets or roads, storm, uh sanitary water, bridges um are considered core assets. And then for non-core assets, the township was required to develop community and technical levels of service. And these include all other assets not considered core. Several new levels of service for non-core assets were included in the twenty-twenty-four asset management plan. And future asset management plans will include additional levels of service as needed. Council has previously endorsed these corp uh these corporate and expanded communities' levels of service, which are shown on the screen. And staff will continue to incorporate these as well into future asset management plans. Just to quickly review them, um effective was one of the levels of service. Um asset management is a strategic uh integrated process that maximizes asset performance, efficiency and reliability and ensures services meet current demands while preparing for future needs. Sustainable incorporates environmental, social, cultural and economic factors to ensure long-term resilience, cost effectiveness and resource efficiency. Supportive enhances transparency and public trust by integrating stakeholder engagement and data-driven decisions, decision-making at every stage. Reliable ensures continuous service delivery through performance metrics, proactive maintenance and risk mitigation. Valuable optimizes investment through cost analysis, risk-based prioritization and preventative maintenance, ensuring efficient use of resources. Inclusive promotes equitable access to municipal services, ensuring infrastructure meets diverse community needs. Resilient anticipates and mitigates risks while adapting to change. Changes using proactive planning and innovative technology. Resilient anticipates and mitigates risks while adapting to change, changes using proactive planning and innovative technology. Stewardship protects environmental, cultural, and social assets while maintaining its infrastructure to support long-term community sustainability. And transparent puts trust through open communication, stakeholder collaboration, and accessible decision, decision-making. This is the type of high-level information that staff are seeking from council, and I'll come back to this at the end of the presentation. So just quickly, this is a list of the asset categories. So I mentioned earlier, we have to have proposed levels of service for each asset category. So these are the, these are the asset categories that we currently have. So it's building, sewer, water, fleet, land improvements, machinery, furniture, and equipment, natural assets, uh, bridges and culverts, road networks, and storm network. Next slide. I'm not going to go through every one of the current levels of service. There's a lot of them that are within the slides that you have. But I did, uh, these are the same numbers that I presented in the 2024 asset management plan. The numbers in brackets reflect the changes from the 2022 asset management plan. And I'm providing these for reference, and I'm certainly happy to go through any of them that council wishes to discuss, uh, at the conclusion of the presentation. I would point out the road network again is considered a core asset. And as noted earlier, the community and technical levels of service for core assets are included in the regulation. Condition ratings are generally inspected based on pavement condition index and surface condition information collected through the road needs studies and in-house assessments. And the 2024 asset management plan had an overall average condition of good for this asset group. Next slide. Bridges are considered a core asset, and condition ratings are generally inspection-based with data collected through the bi-annual OSIM inspections. And the 2024 asset management plan had the overall average condition as good. Next slide. The storm network is also considered a core asset. Condition ratings are generally age-based as assets near their estimated replacement dates, field condition assessments are completed. The 2024 asset management plan had an overall average condition rating of as very good. The water system is considered a core asset, and condition ratings are generally age-based as assets near their estimated replacement dates, field conditions again are, uh, field condition assessments are completed. And the 2024 asset management plan had an overall average condition of good for this class. The sewer system is considered a core asset. The condition ratings are generally age-based, and again, as assets near their estimated replacement dates, uh, field condition assessments are completed. And the 2024 asset management plan had an overall average condition rating as very good for this class. There's two slides for that one. And next slide. Buildings are considered non-core under the regulation. So as a non-core asset, levels of service are determined by the municipality. Condition ratings are generally age-based. Building conditions assessments are expected to be completed in 2025 and include, and then included in the 2025 asset management plan. The 24, 2024 asset management plan had an overall average condition as good for this class. Machinery, furniture, and equipment are also considered non-core, and condition ratings are generally age-based. And the overall average condition was good for this category. Fleet is considered non-core, condition ratings are generally age-based. And the 2024 asset management plan had the overall average condition as good for this category. Land improvements are considered non-core, condition ratings are generally age-based. The 2024 asset management plan had an overall average condition as good for that category. I, the following, the next few slides are some of the, kind of for reference and to summarize some of the previous surveys completed for council's, uh, information. While the budget surveys are generally intended for the overall budget, operating, and capital, this specific question speaks to increasing, maintaining, and decreasing services, and it's been asked the last four years. So I've summarized those onto a single slide. Annual responses have trended lower over the last four years. And as budget surveys include multiple years, the results do likely contain a large percentage of the same respondents. This, the second budget question generally goes into the funding of services through user fees and taxes versus taxes. This 2025 budget survey asks respondents to rank services from one to 10, with 10 being the most important. 2024 budget included a similar, similar questions where respondents were asked to rank services from one to 17. And then this budget survey requested, requested, sorry, asked respondents about increasing, maintaining, or decreasing specific services. And finally, these two surveys, uh, on the development of trails and splash pads were collected separately and are being considered further as part of the Recreation Master Plan. So staff will utilize public engagements from other sources such as the Strategic Plan, various master plans such as the Arts, Culture, and Heritage, IT Master Plan, the Waste Management Master Plan, Parks and Recreation Master Plan, Fire Master Plan, or other programs such as the Urban Forest Plan, the Urban and Rural Transit Plans. And as plans are completed, recommendations will need to be integrated into future asset management plans and levels of service. So in conclusion, establishing the continuous improvement of, uh, clear levels of service is fundamental to efficient and sustainable, sustainable asset management. By aligning our infrastructure with community and organizational goals through defined measurable objectives, we set the stage for improved performance, accountability, and risk management. Our next steps, uh, involve confirming any new revised corporate or expanded community levels of service, uh, from council, engaging with stakeholders, utilizing the Engage Loyalist platform, developing options with financial implications for future council's consideration, defining the proposed levels of service for Loyalist Township, and then finally completing the 2025 asset management plan later this year. This proactive approach will help us achieve long-term operational excellence. I have one more slide after that that kind of just highlights the one that I brought up earlier. And again, this is kind of, we're looking for the high-level, um, input from council. We're not looking necessarily to get into why is that road different than this road? Or why is that truck, uh, ahead of this truck? It's, it's the high-level, uh, direction at this point. And then council or staff will go and work on the proposed levels of service and then bring those, uh, options back to council for consideration on any proposed changes to the service levels.
Good, thank you. So, let me just bring back the, um, council members on screen as well. There we go, thank you. Okay, thank you for the presentation. And it's amazing what the responsibility the township does have, just how much is out there that we take care of. Council, any questions, comments, or staff at this time? Counsel Pradrick.
This question or comment, I guess, maybe, uh, predating whatever happens, whether wise next two days. So Alex, that last page you had up there with the corporate levels of service and effective, sustainable, supportive. This might be the best way for you to answer my question, but how, how would, how would, uh, and I think I know the answer, but in terms of SMART goals, um, you know, a lot of it is infrastructure, you can see it. A common thing is, and it was referenced in two of your charts near the end, snow clearing. So for the average resident, can you maybe give a snapshot of what the level of service might look like? And I know the township is putting it out there because I've seen it, but some people still don't. Everybody wants their driveway or their plow done first, right? But maybe just a brief snapshot of how that works?
Currently, right now, there, there's a number of levels of service within the asset management plan that would affect snow clearing operations. You have fleet, we have roads, we have, um, um, machinery, equipment, obviously, that is all involved in that. But a smart, a smart objective would be, you know, again, specifying our, our, our response rates to meet those, those MMS timelines, which are the minimum maintenance standards for that the province, uh, has implemented. Meeting those standards, measuring, you know, that we're meeting them 100% of the time. Or if we're not, then what are we doing to mitigate the, those circumstances? There are timelines obviously involved in, um, in those specific, um, examples. And that's actually probably a pretty good example where your operational levels of service kind of cross over with your capital levels of service. And typically, I'm more involved on the capital side now, whereas before I would have been involved more on the operational side. So it's, it's making sure that as departments are generating their operational levels of service, that they are, uh, also considering the capital, uh, levels of service so they mesh. If, if we say we're going to cut our snow plowing in half, uh, our, our response time in half, well, then that takes more resources. It's, it's, uh, drivers, it's snow plows, it's material, it's all the things that go into that. So, um, that's when we start talking about proposed levels of service. If we say we want to increase it, then we need to look at all those and what the financial impact of that would be going forward. So I don't know if that fully answers your question, but.
Okay. Counsel Ennis.
There's the chair. For each category in the, in the bottom right corner, there's the capital reinvestment rate percentage. You just explain that a little bit more for me. And, um, so I think fleet, it looks like fleet has the highest one, 3.17%. So what, what does that mean being the highest?
Um, the condition, uh, sorry, the, um, here. So, um, this was kind of discussed in the 2024 asset management plan, but the capital reinvestment rate is calculated based on the annual capital allocation relative to total replacement costs. So when we generate our assets, it generates how much we should be spending each year to maintain our assets. And then that's divided by the total, uh, replacement cost of that asset category. So the township operates, um, sorry, um, for fleet, there's a specific capital reserve fund in order to meet, um, meet our fleet purchases. And then, uh, because the, the assets within that group are, tend to be more short-lived or shorter life vehicles. I mean, a lot of vehicles will last 10 years, um, 10 to 15 years. Where we're, if we're dealing with a water main or a sewer, we might be dealing with 80 years on a, on an asset. So the, uh, the amount we need to spend annually to maintain our fleet, percentage-wise would be higher than we would necessarily on a, even on a, another asset category, which is, has a much higher replacement cost. So often, like I say, fleet, or if you were looking specifically at things like pieces of equipment, they would often have a much higher turnover rate. So that's generally where that's coming. I will mention that, um, I, I did mention it in the previous presentation to council, but the fleet, water, and sewer are generally, uh, fairly accurate in those numbers. The other ones are a, takes the total capital contribution and divides it by the, um, the total, um, it's the total, it takes the total capital contribution and divides it out into all the other areas. So it's kind of spread out. If we didn't do that, what would happen is if we took this year, you know, let's say we're doing WJ Henderson. We've got a massive capital on the building side. That number would go way, way up this year and then way, way down. Whereas some of the other capital programs might go down while that's being funded. What that's looking at is all the other numbers are generally saying, you know, this is where we want to be, but they're generally about roughly about 50%, which is where we're currently spending right now is 50% of what we should be spending. So, um, and, uh, I had that in one of my slides, I don't remember mentioning it, but, uh, we're currently, uh, we're currently approximately 50% of our capital or what we should be spending. So generally, you're going to see them in that half, half, half of what the target rate would be, so, sorry.
Any other questions or comments at this time from council? None. We do have a recommendation before us. Would member like to, uh, make a motion? Counsel Pradrick.
Thank you, worship. I'd recommend that the report from the Corporate Services Strategy, Strategy and Innovation Department dated February 11th, 2025, redeveloping proposed level of service be received and that staff be directed to consider the comments received at this committee of the whole in developing the draft proposed level of service to be brought forward for approval at a future council meeting.
So moved, do we have a seconder? Counsel Budrick. Comments from the mover, seconder, other members? Call a question, in favor? Motion is passed, thank you. So at this time, we would entertain our motion that the committee of the whole now adjourn at 8:07. Counsel Budrick, so moved, seconded by Counsel Ennis. All in favor? Motion is carried. Okay, are there any notices of motion this evening? Are there any direct motions being presented this evening? Saying none, move to the consent agenda. We have two items in the consent agenda that are similar in nature. Either one of them can be extracted if council wishes. Does anyone wish to extract an item this evening? Saying none. We have a recommendation. With that item, would someone like to make a recommendation? Counsel Willis.
I move that all items in the consent agenda dated February 11th, 2025 be approved as presented and that the necessary action be taken.
So moved, seconded by Counsel Parks. Any comments from the mover, seconder? Any other member? Call a question, all in favor? Motion is passed. Announcements, does anyone have any announcements for this evening? Counsel, sorry, Counsel Pradrick.
Uh, thank you, your worship. I would just like to thank Director Campbell for a lovely day on the Loyalist link. We had a chance to go through the route and talk to some, uh, travelers on, I was very impressed, and the driver gave us a pretty good feeling for what's going on there.
Thank you. Any other announcements this evening? Counsel Willis.
I have two. I'd like to congratulate the various groups on Amherst Island that staged the second Amherst Island Winter Festival on Saturday. It started with a pancake breakfast, became, then a car rally, backroom talk at the museum, and ended with a very well-attended pub night. So it was a, a lovely event to have in the middle of winter. And I would also like to congratulate my colleague, Counselor Pradrick, for being elected.